I'd like to call to order the Planning and Zoning Board meeting for October 20th, 2014, in regular session. Madam Clerk, the roll call?
Mrs. Protos?
Here.
Mr. Parker?
Here.
Mr. Carr?
Here.
Mr. Stavopoulos?
Here.
Mr. Giellusis, absent and excused. Mrs. St. Arnold, absent and excused. Chairman Vincent?
Here. Thank you. Before we get into the approval of the minutes, Ms. Lemmons, if you want to introduce our new person on staff?
Yes. It gives me great ple-- is this on? No. Okay. It gives me a great pleasure to introduce our new principal planner. His name is Josh Langen. He's here tonight. He started with us two weeks ago. This is his two-week anniversary. He's coming from, most recently, North Carolina. He's worked in South Carolina, Georgia, and Texas, both in the public and private sectors, with municipalities and with other clients, private clients. So, we're very happy to have him on board. And then, just as another update to the Planning and Zoning Board, we do have an accepted hire for the Director of Planning and Zoning position. His name is Steve Coretta, and his appointment was approved by the Board of Commissioners at their last meeting, and he will be starting. He's got a tentative start date of November 17th. So, we should be fully staffed in about a month. And Josh is here, and would like to say a few words to all of you.
Good.
Hello again. My name's Joshua Langen. I'm from Charlotte, North Carolina, where I spent the past 15 years or so planning. I've done everything from countywide planning to small-city planning to inner-city development stuff to historic preservation. A lot of things, I think, that will go well here. You know, I want to let you get on with your meeting, but I just wanted to say I look forward to working here, and so far, so good. I really like it. And, you know, feel free to call me, stop by the office if you want some one-on-one time, and be glad to talk to you at length, whenever's convenient for you. So, thank you for having me.
Thank you very much, Josh, and welcome aboard.
About Mr. Healy, tell him who he is.
Oh, Karen, will you want to go ahead and introduce Mr. Healy while, you know, we're starting off?
Sure, sure. I was going to do that as well. Dave Healy is our Planning and Zoning Staff Consultant. He'll be making the presentations on behalf of the city tonight. He has more than 40 years of experience as a city planner and administrator in both the public and private sectors. He served 21 years as the Executive Director of the Pinellas County Planning Council, and was also Planning Director for the City of Clearwater for six years. He currently is the Director of the Tampa Bay Region of Calvin Giordano &amp; Associates, which is a full-service planning, zoning, redevelopment firm that specializes in working with municipalities and clients throughout Florida. He has attained an FAICP certification, which is the highest certification of planning profession by the American Institute of Certified Planners. And we're very fortunate that he is on board with us to help us through this transition period, and will be staying on, helping our new planners as they transition through the process. So, we welcome Dave as well.
Thank you, Dave.
Glad to be here, glad to help if I can.
The next item on business is the approval of the minutes. We have, looks like, seven minutes of seven meetings to go through or approve. If the Board would like to do this all at one time, I'd be open to that suggestion, if we can approve them all at once, unless we want to take them one by one.
Point of clarification?
Yes.
For the 2013, I'm not involved with those, so do I go ahead and vote for the city attorney? I wasn't, you know, privy to being at the meetings to know what happened and didn't happen.
That's a good question, and I checked with city attorney before the meeting because I had that very same question.
Yeah.
Since these are many very old meetings, and there's been a lot of turnover on the Board, but it would be all right for Board members to vote on these, even if they weren't at those meetings.
Okay.
If there's an item to be corrected, though, if you weren't at the meeting, you can't ask it to be corrected or changed.
And to clarify that further, Mr. Chairman, actually, you're required to vote, understanding that, you know, even on Board of Commissioners and other kinds of bodies, you have turnover in the composition of those bodies, and they still need to conduct business. So, unless there's, again, an ethical conflict, then you would be required to vote.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
You want the motion to say to take them all at one time or individually first? Or do you want to?
However, a Board member wants to make a motion, we'll consider it.
I'll make a motion to go ahead and approve all the minutes that are brought before us tonight from...
Go ahead and read off the dates.
December 2012, January 2013, March 2013, April 2013, February 2004, March 2004, and April 2004.
Second.
Just to clarify that motion, those were 2014, Mr. Carr, just to be clear. Those are really old minutes.
Okay. There's a motion, a second, any discussion? Okay, we'll take a vote. Roll call.
Mrs. Protos?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Mr. Stavopoulos?
Yes.
Chairman Vincent?
Yes. Thank you. All right. We'll ask our city attorney to swear in any of those who may be speaking or given testimony tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, we'll run through the quasi-adjudicial procedures for this Board. As you know, this Board sits in an advisory capacity to the Board of Commissioners. In these quasi-adjudicial proceedings, the Board accidentally equates judicial advisory capacity. By law, it is the Board's function to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented at the hearing and apply those findings of fact to previously established criteria contained in the Code of Ordinances in order to make a legal decision regarding the application before it. The Board can only consider evidence that the law considers competent, substantial, and relevant to the issues arising from the application and the applicable Code sections. If that evidence demonstrate the applicant has met the criteria, the Board is required by law to advise the Board of Commissioners to find in favor of the application. By the same token, if that evidence demonstrate that the applicant has failed to meet the criteria established in the Code, the Board is required to advise against approval of the application. The parties to this hearing are the applicant and the city. The city is represented by city staff. There may be persons, organizations, or groups that qualify as interveners. Persons or groups that qualify for intervenor status can participate in the hearing as a party. Recognized interveners may examine witnesses, present evidence, and make arguments to the Board. For a person to be granted intervenor status, the person must demonstrate to the Board that he or she will suffer an adverse effect as a result of the quasi-adjudicial decision which exceeds in degree that which may be suffered by the general community. Intervener status may be granted to the representative of an organization or group of persons who have a substantial and compelling interest in the matter, and can demonstrate that they are prepared to present competent and substantial evidence which would be of significance to the Board in making its quasi-adjudicial decision. In a few minutes, the chairperson will give persons, organizations, or groups desiring intervenor status the opportunity to make their requests. There is an established procedure which will be followed at this proceeding. All witnesses must give their testimony under oath. Persons testifying must give their name and address for the record. Testimony and questioning in this hearing must address matters that are relevant and material to the issues under consideration. The city staff will present its testimony and evidence first. The applicant and recognized interveners will have an opportunity to cross-examine the city staff and any city witnesses. The applicant will then present its witnesses and evidence. The city staff and recognized interveners will have an opportunity to cross-examine the applicant's witnesses. Recognized interveners will then present their evidence and witnesses. City staff and applicant will have an opportunity to cross-examine intervenor's witnesses. Absent unusual circumstances to be determined by the Board, a party's opening statement and presentation is limited to 10 minutes. At that point, we'll proceed to the public comment portion of the meeting. Members of the public opposing the application will be given an opportunity to present testimony. After all members of the public opposing the application have concluded, members of the public in support of the application may speak. Each member of the public is limited to four minutes of testimony. A member of an organization or group granted intervenor status who testifies as part of the organization or group's presentation forfeits the right to speak during the public comment portion of the meeting. During the public comment section, members of the public present at the hearing may donate their time to a speaker to extend the speaker's time, but in doing so, the person donating the time forfeits his or her right to speak. Each donation shall extend the speaker's time an additional two minutes. In no event shall the speaker's time be extended beyond 10 minutes of total speaking time. Following public comment, the applicant, city staff, and recognized interveners will have an opportunity to present rebuttal evidence and make a closing argument or summary. The applicant will go first, followed by city staff and any interveners. Absent unusual circumstances to be determined by the Board, a party's closing summary and rebuttal will be limited to 10 minutes each. Following this, the Board will consider the matter. This evening, I'd like to ask all those present who intend to testify this evening, either as a party, city staff, or applicant, or as an intervener, to please stand and be sworn. Have you raised your right hands, please? Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you, folks. Are there any conflicts of interest existing on the Board of the Planning and Zoning Board this evening?
I live on Bay Shore. It's going to affect me. I don't know if it's going to affect me, but I live on Bay Shore.
Do you perceive that you'll be subject to a pecuniary or financial gain as a result of this development, whether it's approved or denied? Gain or loss? Do you feel like you can be?
I don't know what gain I'll have, but...
All right. Do you feel that you can be an impartial fact-finder and arbiter of this decision?
There's some things I want to talk about that may affect Bay Shore and affect me.
All right. Absent a financial conflict, I'd advise you to participate and vote. Have there been any ex parte communications by the Planning and Zoning Board?
Any one.
Any ex parte communications, communications occurring outside of this hearing with the applicant or the property itself? Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. Well, first, here from the city staff, a report on this item. And I presume that since we have the three items that are up now, there's an application for zoning amendment for Bay Shore Heights, and that's item five. Item six is Application 14-62, site plan approval for Bay Shore Heights. And Application seven, or item number seven, is Application 14-17, development agreement regarding Bay Shore Heights. And unless the city attorney tells me otherwise, I would like to conduct the hearing as to all three, since they're related and they are related to each other at one time.
You have no problem with that, so long as we request intervenor status on all the applications at one time and take those as they come before we begin any of the hearings?
And if there's no interveners, the public will still be able to make comments, correct? Any members of the Board?
Yeah, I'm just talking about gaining intervenor status as a substantially affected party, and typically, that would, not limited to, but your typical intervenor status would be granted to someone who lives adjacent to the development or would be affected in some other more tangible way than would the general public. And that'd be the Board's decision to make, if somebody wishes to request intervenor status.
Point of clarification, you want to take them all together instead of one at a time?
Well, as far as taking the testimony, yes.
Oh, the testimony, but the vote will be one at a time?
The votes will be one at a time.
That's all I want to make sure. Okay.
Are there any individuals or groups that want to ask for status as an intervener If you want to come to the podium and state your request?
I'm happy to testify as one of the public, but I'm an adjacent property owner, and I am affected directly. So, I believe that qualifies me as intervenor status.
Sure, could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, Harry Andropoulos, 907 Bay Shore Drive.
It's within the Board's discretion to grant intervenor status based on what Mr. And--
Andropoulos.
Andropoulos has told you? You'd need a motion and a second and a vote.
Okay. Do we have a motion on the request for intervenor status from Mr. Andropoulos?
So moved.
Second it. There's a motion and a second? Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Mrs. Protos?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Mr. Stavopoulos?
Yes.
Chairman Vincent?
Yes. Mr. Andropoulos, then you have been granted intervenor status, which means that you can cross-examine any witnesses that testify. Of course, you can present your own testimony as well, as if you were a party to the proceeding. Normally, the only parties are the applicant and the city.
And the city, yeah.
But as an intervener, you would be able to do that if you wish.
Thank you. I'll-- should I wait there? Yes. Thank you.
Staff? Are there any other requests for intervenor status? Members of the public will still be able to make comments at the appropriate time. Ms. Lemmons, you want to proceed with the-- or whoever's going to do the city report? Is that Mr. Healy?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Healy, I'm sorry.
Chairman, members of the Board, thank you. Karen's introduction was unnecessarily long. On my behalf, it proved only that I'm old. But let me work through these with you. I like and appreciate the idea of taking these in sequence because they are interrelated. I'm sorry? Can you hold the microphone a little bit closer? Closer? Okay. All three applications are very much interrelated, and I think by addressing them all at once, some of the questions may be on the former will be answered by the latter, rather than having to address them individually. I'll certainly stop at the end of each one and ask the Board if there are questions you have of me before we move on to the second item. But the first is an application for zoning amendment for the Bay Shore Heights application. It is made by the Belair Heights LLC, the Belair Capital Group Developers. This is an important project for the city. It's a significant project. It's been one that staff has had under review for some time. I've been involved with it for the past several months, but with Karen and Ray and others' good help, it has moved through a whole series of reviews at the Technical Review Committee level prior to it being ready to bring to the Board for formal consideration. Specifically, it is a request to amend some 21 acres of an existing plat that has existed since the mid-1950s. The plat itself, the area being acquired and proposed to be rezoned includes some 86 lots that are being developed, 60 of which will be developed under the site plan. The property today is classified residential low on the comprehensive plan, the future land use plan. That does not change. The request is simply to rezone the property from the existing R-100, single-family residential, to the proposed R-100A, single-family residential. It identifies the surrounding properties, which are similarly classified as residential low under the plan, zone R-100, and the proposed change is to R-100A that essentially reflects the size and configuration of the lots that were platted back in 1958. I'll run through a brief bit of the background. I won't repeat all of this to you, but as I mentioned, really, what we're attempting to do here is to recognize the reality that when these lots were platted, they were platted at one designation, sometime later rezoned to the R-100. And in order to maintain those existing lots and not have to replat them, the request is that they be rezoned to R-100A. There are several criteria by which the city staff is charged with reviewing an amendment for rezoning. First of all, it does comply. It does comport with the comprehensive plan. That plan is not changed as a function of the rezoning. It remains residential low. The specific criteria for zoning map amendment are spelled out in Section 207.03a of the Tarpon Springs Code, and there are a half a dozen or so of those. I'll just touch on each one, Mr. Chairman, very briefly, and you have the information in front of you. But essentially, the first requirement is that it be considered consistent with the comprehensive plan, and we've enumerated there some of the goals, objectives, and policies in the plan by which we think that meets that test for consistency. It does, in a number of different ways, recognize the environmental issues inherent with the site in terms of recognizing existing wetlands. It does recognize the current development pattern that surrounds the property, including the future land use plan designation. It does speak specifically to the infill development, the purpose in the plan to encourage the infill of already-platted or similarly-developed properties, and this speaks very specifically to that in Policy 116. The second criteria for rezoning asks, are the available uses to which the property may be put appropriate? And the simple answer is yes. There'd be no change to the permitted uses, either permitted or conditional uses, in the R-100 or the R-100A. The third criteria speaks to the efficient and orderly development, considering impact upon growth patterns and cost to the city. If the property is developed consistent with the plan, the effective density of the development would be approximately three dwellings per acre, about 20 acres, proposed to develop 60 lots. And clearly, it will improve the existing public infrastructure with the extension of the old-platted streets, the paper streets that are there, extension of utilities, and provision according to today's standards with respect to stormwater management. It does not adversely impact nor exceed the capacity of the fiscal ability of the city. It will, in fact, as I mentioned, improve a number of the infrastructure components. It has been reviewed by the Technical Review Committee at a series of meetings, the most recent of which was on October 2nd, and the TRC has no objections to the request. We do point out in the staff recommendation that the recommendation to rezone the property from R-100 to R-100A is conditioned on action on the other components of the application, that is, the site plan approval and the development agreement. And these are very much intertwined in the sense that the site plan will detail and tell you exactly what is going to happen under the proposed rezoning. It's not left to speculation about what will be done there, and the development agreement nails down all of the particulars in terms of exactly what the responsibilities of the applicant and the city are. So, with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll be glad to answer any questions you have on the first application for rezoning.
Thank you, Mr. Healy. Are there any questions from the Board regarding rezoning, the rezoning issue? Ms. Protos?
You said three dwellings per acre.
That will be the effective density?
On R-100, the rezon it to the R-100A, right?
Yes.
Because I was under the impression, when we had all the meetings, that we were going to go strictly, except for maybe six lots, or maybe two more, two less. It would all be R-100, except for those smaller lots. And that was the impression that a lot of us came out of those meetings with, at R-100. Now, it's changed. And that was the agreement at that time, when everyone spoke, and we spoke with the developer. So, this is a big change, unless I heard it wrong, and I could have, but I think I'm right on that. And I'd like to know why it's changed this way.
Ms. Protos, I wasn't at those meetings, but I have read the minutes of those meetings and the dialogue, and my understanding is that there are a couple of lots that are larger than required and could have remained R-100 and will be, in fact, developed by that standard. But the lots in question are the previously-platted lots that measure 60 by 120. They're approximately 7,200 square feet. They are as they have always been platted. Nothing has changed. We're attempting to recognize with the zoning designation the reality of the way the lots are, so that they don't need to be reconfigured.
So, in other words, there'll be no R-100 at all in this development?
That's correct. It's proposed to be R-100A and meet those standards.
I'm sorry. Is that better? I guess I got to talk right on it. I'm sorry.
Okay. So, the R-100 is out. It all wants to be-- they want it all changed to R-100A. So, that means how many homes over the R-100 will be in this development?
Well, it means that there were 86 lots that this applicant has acquired, and only 60 of those will be developed. Because the roads, as they were originally-platted, can't or shouldn't be built through the wetlands, there's additional area needed for stormwater management that will be facilitated with the site plan. So, in a simple calculation, if we're looking at 20 acres and we have 60 lots, that's three units per acre on the entirety of the property.
Under R-100A.
I'm sorry?
Under R-100A.
Yes. The maximum is five units per acre, as you know, under the residential low plan category.
Yeah, but R-100 would allow how many? Four.
The R-100 would allow four. That's correct.
Okay, and that's what we came-- I know a lot of us came out of those meetings thinking it was R-100. If you're going to change the zoning to what they want, I see in the backup, it said, "No traffic impact study is required." That's going to put a big impact on Bay Shore, a big impact on Sunset with the schools there and the beach. Would that not require a traffic study? With school buses, parents, and you figure three cars per household or two, and the roads, the width of the roads and the area, that does not require the study?
It does not for the reason that, again, we're dealing with a previously-platted subdivision and the development of those lots on an infill basis. It previously anticipated the roads that are going to be there.
But when that was platted in '58, there was hardly anything out there.
No, I understand.
The school wasn't, I mean, there was nothing out there.
And I understand the practical point that with new residences, there will be new cars on the road.
No, it's the amount of homes that are out there now with the schools and the beach and everything that's there. It's altogether changed since 1958. The growth has been tremendous there.
Surely.
And I just can't understand why there wouldn't be a traffic study to see to suffice having to change to R-100A, to give more residents, to make it bigger, you know? And that's what I can't understand, especially with the schools. You have a middle school right there. You have a high school and an elementary school a few blocks down, and you have the impact of Fred Howard Park Beach. But, of course, the commission-- the Board here could recommend that be a traffic study so we could have the numbers.
You can certainly do that, yes.
Yes, and that would be a very wise thing to do because that should have come before this meeting, so we'd know what we're talking about. That's how I feel. I'm only one person on this Board, but I'm just trying to protect the integrity of the area and the neighborhoods and the safety factor. The other thing I wanted to have you explain is, okay, R-100A is going to give us more of an impact over R-100. But I want to hear what the others have to say because unless I have a hearing problem or a mental problem, we came out of those meetings with R-100. And I'm not that old yet, but I'm confused sometimes.
Thank you, Ms. Protos. Any other questions from the Board for city staff? Okay, Mr. Carr?
With the rezoning, this, what's the smallest, I guess, going, this might be like site plan approval also, what's the smallest property that's planned to be built right now, do you know?
Smallest lot?
Yeah, so like width and depth?
60 feet by 120.
Okay, right on?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. I've been corrected, I guess, 125.
With your experience in the past, have you seen a negative impact on a development and the aspect of rezoning back from 100 to 100A?
Mr. Carr, I think, you know, you have to look at this in the perspective of time. If this were--
I can't hear you, sir.
If this were a totally new piece of property, a greenfield development out on the perimeter of the city, if you would, and the preference of the city were for bigger lots, R-100 would be perfectly logical. But where you've had a subdivision plat that has been partially developed along Loquat and parts of West Bay Shore and not completed, where the circulation system, where the streets have not been pushed through, where the infrastructure that was built when the original development was approved would not be adequate today, would not meet today's standards, this is a classic case of infill and trying to recognize the reality of improving what's there in a similar fashion to what has been built. I don't, in my opinion, it doesn't compromise--
I don't, in my opinion, it doesn't compromise either the existing parts of this current plat that were previously built, nor the surrounding properties that may, in fact, some of which are certainly at R-100. It's not unusual in a city where older development has occurred that in later years, it was zoned or reclassified different than the property was actually platted or proposed to be developed. And I think that's the situation we're dealing with here.
Okay. That's it, thank you.
Mr. Parker, do you have any questions for staff?
I do have one question. The neighborhood right here on Loquat Drive, was that part of this originally? And they went on and developed this and did not develop the rest of it?
On the south side of Loquat?
On the south side, yes, sir.
Yes, sir, it was.
It was?
That's my understanding.
These lots that are here, how do they compare to the lots that you are proposing to put in here size-wise?
My understanding is they're exactly the same size, the lots.
Oh, I thank you.
Other questions?
None for me.
Mr. Andropoulos?
I just have one question, one or two questions.
It's, what kind of a flood elevation is that proposed subdivision going to be?
We've addressed that, and later on, I can give you the specifics. There are some that, I think it's an AE designation that would require the base flood of the, of the home to be at 11 feet. That has been taken into account in the design of the road system and the stormwater management system.
Okay. Because what happens is that affects, inadvertently affects the evacuation zone, where these people have to evacuate.
Sure.
I'm just saying, it causes the folks that are in that subdivision to have to be evacuated when you're in a flood zone. And conversely, they would have to fill either the middle school, which is an evacuation zone, or some other facility.
I don't want to confuse the flood elevation level with the evacuation zone. We have our stormwater management engineer here, and maybe when we talk about the site plan, he could address that more specifically.
Any other questions?
No, sir.
Mr. Healy, I've got a few questions.
Yes, sir.
From looking at the site plan, are the lots that are outlined in yellow, are those the only lots that are described in the rezoning application?
The property in its entirety is part of the rezoning, including that portion of the property that would be devoted to the stormwater management system. But yes, the lots, as they're outlined in yellow, are the only ones that are affected, if you will, directly by the rezoning.
I guess what I'm trying to get at is I see it looks like there's some undeveloped lots in here that aren't outlined in yellow, and they're not also in a stormwater retention area. Are those also under the same, are they being considered in this application? Or are they owned by other individuals?
They're owned by other individuals. They are not part of this application.
Is there a reason that we shouldn't rezone all of the lots that aren't developed in that subdivision while we're doing this? I mean, you've got same-sized lots that are owned by some individuals.
Yes, I understand the nature of your question. The truth is, we're responding to an application brought to us by an individual property owner who's assembled these, these properties. Those other owners are certainly free to apply similarly, or the city could initiate an amendment of its own volition, if this is approved, to encompass the rest of it. It may be, and I don't know this for a fact, that some of those lots are owned jointly, where the same owner may own more than one and might have the potential to combine them and not want them rezoned. So we didn't want to presume that.
And that's all the questions I have. Mr. Andropoulos, you have a question for city staff as an intervener? Yes, come to the podium, please.
Mr. Healy, I just have a couple of questions. This is, this rezoning is the entire property. Because you mentioned at this time, where the words are used, there won't be any additional lots rezoned later. It's the entire thing, it's making up 60 new lots. Is that correct?
That's, that's all, it is part of this application, by this-
Right, I understand there's other owners, but, but, okay. My question is, if we had held to the R-100 standard, how many lots would be able to be zoned in that area?
I can't answer that definitively, because it would do a couple of things. Obviously, it would require the recombination of certain lots.
That's correct.
But it would also affect with that the amount of area devoted to stormwater management and, and the street configuration itself. So it isn't as simple as saying, I'm looking at these lots and saying, reconfiguring them would yield a different lot number. It would really require the whole plat to be redone, including the street layout and the stormwater management system. I can't give you a definitive numerical-
I understand. There were 80 platted lots, though, initially? Is that what we're talking about?
Eighty-six.
Eighty-six platted lots?
Required by this applicant.
Okay.
Being converted to 60.
And they were 50-foot lots, I believe, is what they were originally. Is that correct?
No, I think they're 60 feet.
The originals were 60s?
These lots in question are 60 feet. That's all I can answer.
Okay, all right. So we really don't know what the R-100 zone would have yielded out of this property?
I can't tell you that without a whole lot of redesign and engineering work to determine that.
Except that the city usually requires a combination of lots based on the plating that they have already. And it usually ends up, you just simply divide it up, make them 75 footers, as long as they meet the 10,000 square foot determination.
And that would be the case if you were dealing with, originally, one owner or groups of owners where they could, in fact, be combined.
Right, well, we have that now in this situation. We have one owner owns 86 lots.
One owner that has contracted to buy a bunch of individual lots.
Yeah, but they were all from one owner, though. And he's, and he's taken them all into unified ownership. That's fine. So we're looking at 60 lots, but there won't be any additional lots at any future time in this particular application. Okay, thank you very much.
Does the applicant have any questions to city staff? Just a minute, yeah, you'll get your chance in just a minute for your opening statement. If there are no other questions from the board?
I have a question. I keep hearing the word "we" at this time. Is "we," the city, decided on this for the application of R-100A? Is that the "we" decided this on the 1958 plat? I keep hearing "we." Who is "we"?
I guess I'm not sure what you're referring to, Commissioner. If I said "we," I meant city staff and bringing the application to you.
I don't understand why that wasn't brought up at the beginning when we were having the hearings, and why it wasn't addressed at that time. If it was known that it could not be R-100A, and I'm just making this statement so I can get it into the minutes, please. It was addressed, and at that time, we talked about R-100A. And now we're hearing of a change, and I hear "we," and it just puts a question mark in my mind.
I don't know if this is responsive, Ms. Protas. I think you're talking, and I may be misunderstanding your question, but you're talking, and I recall those conversations from prior, you're talking about two different applicants here with two different, you know, applications. And city staff is, I think, I want to put words in their mouth, are responding to the applications as they come in versus, you know, evaluating what was done before versus how this present one is evaluated.
Well, the way I understood it, there were lots that were going to be 100A, and there were six lots, maybe a few more, that weren't, that didn't qualify for 100A, and that was accepted, and now it's all 100A. That's the thing. And all around it, in a lot of areas, it is R-100. So it's not consistent with the adjacent neighborhoods.
Ms. Protas, are you referring to the community meetings? There were two of them, at least that were mentioned. I didn't attend any of those.
I did every one of them, and it's the community meetings. That's where this was discussed.
Ms. Protas, if I can try and add on to what's been said, I think maybe you've just got it reversed. There are two or three lots, they're identified as lots 34 and 35 in particular, that are larger than R-100A, larger than the minimum. They could have conceivably remained R-100. They are being changed to R-100A to be uniform throughout the subdivision. So there were only a few lots, I believe, and the applicant can correct me if I'm wrong, that in fact would have qualified to be R-100. Not, not the reverse.
I don't know if those meetings were taped, but if they were taped, people need to hear that.
Ms. Protas, those meetings would have been informational meetings for the community, and the, the issue for tonight is the application that's before us.
I understand that, Mr. Chairman, I understand that. But I just, some of us walked away with a different understanding.
At this time, we'd like to hear from the applicant regarding the rezoning application.
Good evening. My name is Bruce Danielson, 36 Winston Drive, Bel Air, Florida. Just to give a little history on this project, I think the board may have looked at this a year ago when D.R. Horton brought it to your attention. At that point, they had only, were able to acquire 56 of the 96 available lots, and they were looking to do an R-78 rezoning. That was voted down at the, at the city commission level. This year, we brought it to the city in a couple of different formats. Twice as informational meetings with, with residents. And the, from the beginning, it has always been the same situation. We're taking 86 lots. We're putting a acceptable zoning designation over the existing plat. These were platted in 1958. The city of Tarpon Springs changed the zoning, I believe it was in '74, which put them out of compliance with the, with the R-100. They are in compliance with the R-100A. There were, I believe it was four or five lots that did qualify for R-100A. The rest were going to be changed, or did qualify for R-100, excuse me. The rest were being changed to R-100A. This was done at both city meetings, or at both informational meetings and also at the city meeting, which is taped, which is on YouTube, where we went through the development agreement, you know, every issue of the development agreement. One of those issues being the zoning. And the plat has been the same. The request has been the same from day one, is to give an acceptable zoning designation to the already-platted lots. And that, that hasn't changed. We were asked by the city to do it all as 100A, R-100A, so it is consistent. Because originally, we were leaving the ones that did qualify as R-100, we were leaving them as R-100. But to make it consistent, the application was amended to do it all R-100A. The lots aren't changing, the sizes aren't changing. Everything is as it's been since 1958. Actually, we, we made the bigger ones even bigger due to being able to work under current setback requirements. So that, that's been the history from the beginning.
Thank you. The questions from the board for the applicant. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Have a seat. I'd like to ask the city attorney, at this time, we would normally begin hearing from the, the public who may wish to address the issue. But since we have three applications, many of their issues may involve zoning, as well as the other issues at one time, rather than having to come up multiple times. Would it be acceptable to go through and, and the process of the other two applications and then open up the public for public comment on, so that the public can address any of the three items or all three at one time?
Yeah, I think that'd be fine in terms of public input and comment, so long as the public is given a full opportunity to talk about each of the applications, which, as you described, will happen. At this juncture, I would recommend that you open the zoning amendment to the intervener to present witnesses and evidence, if he chooses to. And after that, move on.
Yeah, members of the public, if you, you will have a chance to speak on any of these applications. The three applications are before us. When the time comes, so you can, you know, address any of the three issues or all three of them at one time, rather than having to come up three times separately. And Mr. Andropoulos, do you have any comments or a presentation you wish to make? I'm sorry? At this time, then, Mr. Healy, if you would do the staff presentation on the site plan approval, I think is the next item. Is that correct?
It is, Mr. Chairman, yes. I won't repeat some of the same things that were identified with the rezoning.
And that microphone probably doesn't work quite as well, so you need to speak real close to it, please.
I won't repeat a lot of the information that we've talked about with the rezoning. Is that better?
Yes.
Thank you. With respect to the site plan, it's set forth in the accompanying exhibits. We've identified the site plan. We do have a submission tonight that proposes a revision that I'll let the applicant describe to you. But it basically provides for the extension of West Bay Shore from its current terminus north of Loquat Drive to connect with Bay Shore Drive. Portions of DeSoto Way and Cajaput Way are proposed to be vacated consistent with the accompanying vacation request that will go to the city commission to recognize existing intervening wetlands and accommodate provision for stormwater management. It identifies proposed connections and additions to the potable water and sanitary sewer systems, including a sewer lift station, replacement of the four-inch concrete water lines with six-inch PVC lines along Loquat Drive, as well as upsizing an existing stormwater outfall pipe to Creamer Bayou. The 60-lot subdivision will meet the individual lot size, lot width, lot depth, and yard setback requirements for the proposed R-100A zoning district that we just talked about, as set forth in the site data table on the site plan and attached as an exhibit to this report. One of the members asked about the portions of the site are in the FEMA AE-10 zone and minimum floor elevations. And this zone will be at an elevation of 11 feet or higher. As we note throughout here, the, the site plan is accompanied by corresponding applications, not only for the vacation, but for the approval of the development agreement that locks in the specifics of the site plan. So in addition to the plan itself, and looking at it and trying to understand what's on it, a lot of the details in that have been worked through by the applicant and the city attorney and are enumerated in great detail in the development agreement, and we'll turn to that in a minute. The process for review of the site plan is set forth in Section 210.03 of the code, and calls for the planning and zoning board to review the site plan for compliance with the Comprehensive Plan, the Comprehensive Zoning and Land Development Code, including the city's concurrency management system and the city's building codes, and provide a written recommendation to the Board of Commissioners. The Technical Review Committee has reviewed each component of the multiple-part application, and again, has recommended it was in a form satisfactory to be brought forward to the planning board. It does, in our estimation, comport with a future land use plan. The policies in the Comprehensive Plan as more specifically enumerated in the accompanying application for rezoning, the specific standards will be complied with in all manner. Be required to be consistent with concurrency management at every step of the way for all of the infrastructure components in the plan. Those include water, sewer, solid waste, stormwater management, recreation open space, and so forth. Staff recommendation is to approve the site plan with several conditions. The first is, obviously, again, subject to approval of the corresponding development agreement and any revision in the development agreement that we make as a function of the site plan. The change, one of the, one of the conditions was related to the recommendations in the fire department about larger turnarounds on the proposed dead-end streets at DeSoto and Cajaput. That's been revised in the plan that we see tonight to provide a loop street connection, so that won't be necessary if the planning board finds that loop connection satisfactory. We identify that, obviously, in a project of this nature, there's a whole host of outside agency approvals, including the Southwest Florida Water Management District, Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission, and others that are enumerated, that would need to be met and subject to their approval. And then, obviously, all construction plans consistent with the approved site plan and the- And then obviously, all construction plans consistent with the approved site plan and the payment of all requisite fees. The city attorney has attached a draft resolution by which the site plan would ultimately be considered and approved by the city commission, and has enumerated those same specific conditions on the second page of that resolution. With that, Mr. Chairman, I'll be glad to try and answer any questions that the board has of me with regard to the site plan.
Thank you, Mr. Healy. All right, questions from the board? Ms. Portis?
I'd like to hear the questions of the, uh, members that may answer my questions, and then I'd please come back.
Sure. Mr. Parker?
No questions at this time.
Mr. Carr?
Got a couple of questions. Um, just, I didn't see anything talking about the trees overall for the site. Replacement-wise, um, how many trees were taken out or anything like that? Did I overlook that?
No, there'll need to be a tree survey. They'll need to be identified, and specifically, the replacement formula in the city code met, in terms of all, all the trees that would be removed.
Okay, and the aspect of, it, um, talked about per city code, and then referenced one other aspect of, um, in addition to landscaping requirements out there in this code, one street tree of at least one-point-five caliber, and then goes on talking about a cluster of palm trees. So, that's in addition to what is gonna be, needing to be either paid into the fund or replacement aspect for the city? Does that sound right?
I'm not, I'm not sure, to be honest. I don't know if Karen knows, or anybody else here can answer that?
I'm just reading off, um...
What, what are you looking at?
Page five of City Tarpon Springs Subdivision Site Plan Approval Application, and it's number three under landscaping.
In the application itself?
Uh, yeah.
Yes, that's just restating the, the requirements of the code.
Okay. So that's gonna be done afterwards, this is all done, I guess? Because I know in the past, we've seen those that come across our board already completed. Is that just pending to save money overall for the developer, I guess, or?
It will be, and it depends, of course, on the, on the sequence that he proceeds with respect to clearing and the development of individual lots.
Okay. Um, thank you. Can we elaborate a little bit on runoff, um, an aspect of how it's gonna be set up with the subdivision?
Sure.
I see there's a, an out, kind of a outpour into the Kramer Bayou. A concern I have overall is the amount of those that we have throughout the city already. And if any recreational people are here, if you've stepped a foot into the bayou or into the river, you're in muck. So, um, is there any aspects to be taken to try to prevent excess silt to come off the road, or anything along those lines?
I'm gonna have the city's stormwater engineer come up, if I may, and, and speak to that more directly, because he's been a part of the team that's reviewed this in terms of increasing that pipe size and trying to solve the corresponding drainage or flooding problem on Bay Shore itself. That's part of the...
Overall.
Part of the solution. So, Brian, could I ask you to come up and maybe speak to that more specifically than I can?
Good evening. My name is Brian Anderson. I'm, I'm the, I'm with Stantec. I'm the city's consultant, stormwater consultant. Yes, the, uh, the site plan does have a stormwater management facility. This has been designed in accordance with Southwest Florida Water Management permitting requirements that will receive all stormwater runoff from the site. Treatment will take place in the stormwater management facility. The pond has been designed in accordance with state regulations for water quality criteria. It's some of the most stringent criteria in the nation. The outfall itself will be upsized to allow more water to come out of the area, which will resolve a flooding issue on Bay Shore Boulevard. Attenuation will not be required, because the pond itself discharges to the Gulf of Mexico primarily. Therefore, it's not sending more runoff downstream to someone else's problem. So attenuation is not required per SWF MUD permitting criteria, but treatment is.
Okay. Uh, maybe this is jargon, I don't know. Is stormwater facility, is that the pond?
Yes, I'm sorry, that is the pond that, uh, you may see it blue, I guess, or is it green?
I think it's green.
My, my copy's black and white, so...
Okay.
Uh, yeah, the, the pond is in the middle of the site. It's in a, uh, light cyan color. There's a dry pond. So the water will infiltrate into the existing native soils there.
What about West Bay Shore? How is that gonna flow, uh, if that connects to Bay Shore?
Uh, I have not seen the specific stormwater collection system for West Bay Shore, but, uh, it is required to be, um, picked up, the all, all roadway runoff and runoff associated with the homes, and will discharge into the pond.
Okay.
There'll be a closed sewer system similar, you see on similar streets, the inlets, curb inlets, type F curb. It's a six-inch raised curb with, uh, type P five, P six inlets.
Throughout the development?
Yes, sir.
So overall, though, this is, through the plan, it's adding an additional reprieve to Bay Shore itself for the flooding of, uh, heavy rains and stuff, so that's another plus we're looking at?
Yes, sir. In the, uh, area you see that's, uh, hatched with the diagonal green hatching, that area is a wetland. That's the representation of a wetland for the site. That area there, um, actually floods today naturally with just a high tide and a north wind, which blows water up into the stormwater collection system that is there today. This road has been documented as a flooding issue by the city numerous times. The applicant has proposed to increase the size of the existing pipe that will allow the water to discharge out of that area. And they are gonna be doing a study to, uh, to determine what size pipe is required to alleviate the existing flooding conditions that are there today. Right now, that, that roadway floods for a ten-year event, uh, which is a one chance, one, um, it's not a, an event that occurs every ten years. It's an event that occurs, um, it's a probability of occurring any given year. So, today, that flood, that road floods for a ten-year storm event. In the developer's agreement, you'll see, I'm not sure what section it says, but, uh, they're gonna be doing an analysis to ensure that that storm, the roadway does not flood for a twenty-five-year event.
Okay, so overall, you think with the current residents on Bay Shore, it has left impact water-wise than it currently does now?
Most certainly. It'll resolve the flooding issue there today.
Okay.
Even with high tide?
I'm, I'm sorry, ma'am, I did not hear you. Yes, high tide is accounted for. That is the, uh, when they do the stormwater analysis, they use the mean high tide, which is required for, for permitting engineering. It's good engineering practice. It's pretty much required. And so the tailwater condition, or the downstream condition of the pipe analysis, will, uh, will use the mean high tide for that area. Um, one, one important thing that I forgot to mention, uh, where the city's going to be also installing a, um, on the site plane you see today, there's a blue dash line, which represents the pipe layout for where the pipe is, where it's, where the pipe is today, and where it's going to be replaced. In line, in between the two homes, the city's going to be installing a backflow preventer there, which is basically a check valve, which will prevent high tide from backing up into the storm sewer system, but it still allows storm events to pass the water through.
That's a good point. It answered one of my questions about the backflow. Very good. Uh, any other questions about stormwater while we have the expert here at the podium, from the, from the, uh, from the board? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We're still doing questions, I guess, for city staff from the board? Uh, Mr. Carr, do you have any more questions?
I've got one other question, too. Um, Eunice Drive, um, I guess it's considered a paper road. Most of it is considered paper road, like the rest of these roads are. Looking at it overall as a site plan approval, um, instead of like a micro kind of focus, looking more of like a, a city plan here, um, it, is this something the city has looked into, trying to finish the connectivity of the paper road as a whole? As these other roads in the development are being put in, um, what was the discussion along those lines? And I know, understand, you mentioned something along the lines of the developer, it's not his property or the area they're developing. But I mean, has the city thought about what the cost may be, or, uh, the advantages of doing that to maybe promote the rest of development of the area also of infill?
There, there's been some discussion about whether there was a need to extend Eunice Drive. We've had that discussion with the applicant. Clearly, it's not their responsibility. They don't need to do anything with Eunice Drive to provide access to the lots that they've acquired or are developing. It's only partially improved to serve those few first four or five homes that are there. At some future date, if the city found merit in extending Eunice Drive through to Bay Shore to provide additional connectivity or, uh, connection, that's certainly something the city could undertake. It would be the city's responsibility to design and approve that. It is not proposed to be done as part of this project.
I'd like to speak on that, if I may, Mr. Chairman, when he's finished.
Overall, I mean, is, if there are already, construction's already going on, roads are being built, is that something the city would be willing to look at, um, right now? Or, I mean, I think we, we, we talked about briefly, uh, the cost of economies, I suppose, with, uh, the building of, of the roads going on at the time, and potentially, if there's a discount for the city to develop it now versus holding off in the future times. Just, just a thought, overall, looking at as a desire to infill an area of the town that would have, this would be prohibited if it wasn't there?
That's certainly something that the city could take a look at. I'm not in a position to recommend they do so or, or don't do so. I know there are some challenges with extending that through in terms of the topography and the drainage, and how it, particularly at the north end where it connects back to Bay Shore. It would not be an inexpensive extension, to be sure, uh, but it's something that could be looked at. In terms of the immediate circulation, though, that is being accomplished with the extension of West Bay Shore and its connection to Bay Shore, the loop street here around Loquat, certainly that's self-sufficient, if you will, in terms of the, uh, traffic pattern. It isn't dependent on that. It might provide another relief point on, on Bay Shore, but if you look at, is it really any quicker or more efficient to get from there on Eunice than to travel, um, on West Bay Shore back to, to, uh, I guess it's Florida at this point? You'd really bring it back to approximately the same point at the south, so...
Okay, what's, um, what if we looked at, uh, not a traditional everyday occurrence, but like, uh, we've got a tropical swarm that came in and pushed water up onto the road? Have we thought about that aspect of evacuation routes?
I don't know that it's been studied from that vantage point. It's, it's a legitimate question. I, I'm not sure. When I look at the, at the configuration and the proximity to Bay Shore, and where you'd need to get to, that it would really serve much of a purpose in terms of evacuation.
Yeah.
It would certainly open up the rest of that property to development. And then the question becomes, should the city bear the cost of that for those other properties that remain to be developed?
Sure.
Or should that be a shared cost in some way?
Thank you. Uh, all the questions, I have?
Okay. Mr. Stevroplas, you have questions?
All my questions have been answered. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Portis?
I want to address Eunice Drive, because that was addressed also at previous meetings. And I was told by one of the, uh, members of the development company that they would work with the city on Eunice Drive. And I went to the city manager, and he says, "It's too expensive." But we have forgotten one thing in our comprehensive plan, which was spoken about by Alan Posovich and the two previous boards. And that is the multimodal transportation element of the comprehensive plan. The need for Eunice Drive, which this board has a right to do, to recommend to the city commission that be considered and talked about, needs to be opened. Number one, it's gonna be a safety factor for the area. From Sunset Drive, where the Asimaks live, to down the hill from, um, Mrs. Bartel, that would be the only way that they would be able to get out with a big storm, or if something happened. Eunice Drive can go from Riverside all the way through to Sunset. It is important at this time that we consider Eunice Drive and ask the city to work with the developer, whether it's giving credits, whatever they need to do to open that up at this time while this development is going through. It also will give access for people to walk, ride their bikes, get to the schools, other than using West Bay Shore Drive, when they can't get through, to get up the hill to get out. That's a very important element to look at in this development. I know for myself tonight, I'm gonna, whether I get the support or not, I'm gonna ask that we recommend to the commission that they open Eunice Drive, because we need to work with that part of the transportation element in the comprehensive plan. It will also put new lots, uh, on the tax record. People will be able to develop their lots if they want. We will have water and sewer there, and it's gonna help the whole area. And I think it's very important, and I'm glad that you brought it up, because that was one of the elements that I wanted to talk about. And I'd like to hear Mr. Healy speak about the multi, multimodal transportation element of the, uh, comprehensive plan. Because we went into great lengths with the commission and the city commission meetings and citizens asking questions. And here is a perfect example of where we can work with it.
Ms. Portis, I certainly don't have any objection, and I think it's well within the board's purview, if you think that's important, to pass that recommendation along as part of your action.
It's very important for the safety, health, welfare of the citizens in that portion of Bay Shore. And that's what we're supposed to look at. The other, uh, item, and I don't know if now's the time to bring it up, but the engineers here and the developer, the gopher turtles. I was told by someone in the development group, "Well, we bury them." Well, I don't want them buried. He said, "They'll dig their way out." Uh, I do love my gopher turtles there. They're not gonna be touched on my property, thank God, and we've got four babies we're watching, but there are a lot there. I have called the state twice. I'd like to hear what the developer has to say, how they're gonna remove the gopher turtles, and have they taken a survey yet?
They have. They have surveyed, and we've identified that as a specific condition of approval, that they get the requisite permit from Florida Fish and Wildlife in order to relocate the gopher turtles.
And what happens?
What happens?
Where do they take them?
Oh, I'm not sure where they, where they take them. That's part of the, that's part of the permit, I'm sure, that would be required.
I understand that, but that's a big piece of property on those gopher turtles, and we have so many there. That's why I'm concerned with them. And, uh, I just don't wanna see them buried, as he said, when they start, uh, uh, construction on, on the land. That's a terrible thing.
I think the regulations are they, they remove them to a, an approved site.
I understand that, but what, the, some of the answers I got, it bothered me about them. And I think the neighbors here in the area are very concerned about it, because that's what we've talked about at meetings. But, uh, like I said, I'm going to make, I'd like to make that motion when the time comes about Eunice Drive. It's very, very important to give the commission to look at.
Okay. You, you'll be free to make that motion.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Healy, regarding the site plan approval from the board?
Oh, are you gonna bring a gas line? I'd like to know if they could bring a gas line up through the development? No. There's no natural gas there?
I can't. You'll need to ask the applicant whether that's part of their utility plan or not.
Did you hear, Ms. Portis, to ask that question of the applicant when he comes up?
Well, he just shook his head no, so...
Uh, Mr. Carr, you have another question?
Just one other question on the site plan. I know, um, the way, I guess, ways referred to is paper roads. De Soto Way and Cajaput, uh, those, I think, are designed to go all the way through, but then they stop at the retention pond. Is there a concession or anything looked into for the city? I mentioned it to the city attorney, um, since those are no longer gonna be used as roads, and it's gonna be used for the developer to use as, um, retention area? and it's going to be used for the developer to use as retention area? Where, excuse me, how would that fall into play with the city? Does that mean, is that a trade-off, or what works with that aspect? Or is that something that's going to be in development agreement? We should, I think it kind of probably talks about them, both of them, so.
There is a separate vacation request that will go forward to the commission. They'll have to approve that vacation by whatever terms are appropriate under the code.
Is there compensation with the vacation, or is it just, since you're developing it, here's this land and use it?
I'm sorry. Yeah, there's no compensation in a vacation.
Can you repeat that?
There is no compensation in the vacation.
There is no compensation of the city vacating property?
Correct.
It has been before, Counselor. Why not now? It used to be if you vacated property, you got paid for it. If they vacate property between two property owners, they pay for it. Why isn't it now?
That's not the way our ordinance is written. Just give me just a moment, please, Ms. Protos. Yeah, the city's present ordinance does not call for compensation. That doesn't mean that some couldn't be requested, but that's not the direction now is given relative to the development agreement.
So that could be a factor in putting in Eunice?
No. I mean, because you're not talking about, we're not talking about Eunice, we're talking about the vacations on the others. Eunice doesn't, again, Eunice is not implicated in this agreement or in anything that we're doing here tonight.
But if they agreed to put in Eunice in the city, could they use the vacating of those rights away?
I would need to determine whether that's possible or not. Offhand, I'm uncomfortable answering that from the dais without doing the appropriate research. You know, it seems to me that, based on what I know of the Eunice pull-through, probably from a value standpoint, it's far in excess of that, of the right-of-way, but...
Well, I was just surprised to hear that, because other developments have had to pay for the vaca, for property that was vacated. Okay. Things have changed.
There are no other questions from the board for city staff, then? Mr. Andropos, do you have questions at this point in time on, this is on the site plan itself?
Excuse me, before you start, Mr. Andropos, I apologize. Ms. Protos, under the city's ordinance, it's Section 216 of the development code. It calls for the payment of fees in a vacation, but it has a tie-in to the, and it's an application fee. It's tied into the appraised value of the property, and it's simply to defray administrative costs, et cetera, et cetera. But there is no, there is no authorizing ordinance to trade them for compensation, if you will.
If there is compensation, is it per lot?
Well, as I said, there isn't any authorizing ordinance to do it at all, so I couldn't answer it.
Mr. Andropos, do you have questions?
Yes. Probably my question is for the staff engineer in terms of the stormwater, if I could. You said that there'll be complete curbs and gutters on the entire road system that they're putting in? Also, that you will be draining all of the water into the retention area that you're creating, the pond and the new pipe and all the things that we discussed. There is, however, on the site plan, an extensive ditch that runs the entire length of my property that is going to be used to retain water. That was not what my understanding is. I would like to hear what the city consultant has to say in that respect.
I misspoke earlier. Not all of Bayshore is going to be collected by curb and gutter. There is a portion right around Lucille Drive where the topography of the roadway changes and drains. At Lucille Drive, there's a high point within the topography. So everything south of Lucille Drive drains and curb and gutters, collected and is routed towards the pond. Everything to the north of Lucille Drive, on the west side, will drain off into the right-of-way into the proposed ditch within the right-of-way. One of the criteria that will be required for the applicant to follow in order to obtain a stormwater permit from Swift Mud will be to show, to demonstrate that that ditch will not discharge any additional stormwater that discharges from that site today. So it's a pre-versus-post analysis. The stormwater consultant or engineer for the applicant will do an analysis to determine how much runoff is generated from that section of roadway or land today. Let's say it's 10 cubic feet per second. And then the post-development analysis, his rate cannot exceed that same rate. So let's say the post-development runoff cannot exceed the pre-development runoff. Does that answer your question, sir?
That's fine, but, so now we're having a road that's not going to be built to city standards for that section. There won't be any curb and gutter that can contain. It's just going to be an asphalt road that they put through there with no curb and gutter? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so now we're putting in a non-compliant city road. Okay. Secondly, the applicant has assured me that there would be no retention in that area at all. We have no problems there with drainage now. If we're going to start collecting water there, we're going to start with the mosquitoes and all the other things that go there. Not to mention, you've essentially cut my property off from the right-of-way completely by putting this ditch in here. This is not what was proposed initially. It's not what they're saying that they were going to do. So I ask that the city engineers relook at this and maintain that they put in a compliant road, which it won't be. Also, that there's no drainage relied there. Also, the drainage is not quite that way. It's all, it's higher from Bayshore to Lucille Drive, all the way down, drains this way. And then you're saying that because they're going to pick the water up here, they can't bring it over to here? Is that what you're telling me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That doesn't seem to make sense. Mr. Healy, I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's right.
Yeah.
This is the topography here, so you have a high point of 15, then everything drains down. So this is the low point, and it goes out towards the bayou there. So this comes back, this comes back, and then it goes that way.
Actually, it does not go to the bayou there.
Right, it goes.
You're talking about draining it onto my property?
Well, no.
Yes.
Yes, historically, that's where the outfall is. That's correct. Right off, historically goes through.
So you're going to add three lots in the development that's going to drain water onto my property? You're going to put a hard pavement road in? You're going to drain that water, which usually goes in the ground now, onto my property? And that count for it? Is that correct?
That's correct. They'll show that the development does not exceed the pre-development discharge by law.
So we're getting lies, then, from what the developer has said? Okay, that's why. Non-compliant road, which is what you're saying? I'm not accusing you of anything. I want to understand what it is.
Of course you do.
Yeah. Non-compliant road, drainage put there that wasn't there in the past, where there's no drainage problems now. I guess this is not exactly what was promised, and I haven't said anything at any of these hearings, because I was assured by the developer that this wouldn't happen. And now, surprise. So that's all the questions I have you. I may have some further questions for the developer.
If I could respond to a couple of your concerns. With respect to your concern about holding water, they will be required to demonstrate that that water percolates into the ground in no less, no more than 72 hours. So I never, from my understanding, mosquito larvae cannot be born in three days. I mean, so those ditches need to be dry within 72 hours.
And then how am I supposed to cross those ditches to have access to that roadway, which I have now? You're essentially cutting me off with a drainage facility that's not really necessary at this point. It's nice, flat ground. It's woods. It's fine. So we're now going to collect water there, and then it's supposed to be gone within 72 hours? Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay. And cutting me off, of course, from the street access to my property.
Mr. Andropos, can you point out where your property is?
Do you see the, for lack of a better term, the little bump out on Bayshore, on the new development where they have like the pie-shaped lots in yellow?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and the other lots that extend essentially just past that? There's one lot next to that final lot that's a rectangular lot.
Right.
All the property running on the left-hand side is mine. All of it.
All the way up to?
All the way up to where Bayshore is now. That entire L, you could say that's Lucille Drive, that all runs essentially the length of my property. Okay?
Thank you.
I'd like to also just let you know that the applicant, by an engineering standpoint, will need to demonstrate that they will not create any adverse off-site conditions with their stormwater. So they'll need to demonstrate that no additional runoff leaves the right-of-way than succeeding there today.
I understand you're trying to alleviate my fears. The problem is that there's quite a, the gradient at the top is about 18 feet at the top of Bayshore, at what is essentially the end of Lucille Drive where it's going to be meeting up with Bayshore. You can see the top of the L. It drops all the way down there. How that proposed ditch is going to hold any water in it, I would like to know. It's all going to run downhill, because it goes down at a pretty good rate down to essentially where the elbow is. So that water's going to run down there, and it's going to flood into my property, is what it's going to do. So, you know, I really, I just assumed they didn't even bother putting the road in at this point, if that's what the big plan is.
May I have some clarification, Mr.?
Do you have a question of someone? Who do you wish to ask?
I guess it would be the engineer, first of all, or the developer. I want to know, all of West Bayshore that you're putting in, it's just, it's not going to be in a compliance road?
Developer, Ms. Protos, the developer will be up in just a minute on the site plan approval, and you can ask him the questions you have.
All right, because we're going to have to change some things in this.
Any other questions for city staff from the board? And Mr. Andropos, your fine? Okay. At this time, we'd like to hear from the applicant regarding the site plan.
Good evening again, and I'll start at the beginning and work through all these questions or comments. Now, when we first proposed this, we did hold the two city meetings, and we got a lot of great feedback. And we tried to incorporate all of that feedback into this plan, which I think we've done fairly successfully. In regards to the turtles, we did do a survey, and there will be a Florida Fish and Wildlife, what's called a permit for that, and they will be transported, they will be removed and placed at a location somewhere in northern Florida on a nice, happy turtle farm or wherever. So none of them will be buried. They will all be very happy in their new home. As far as the vacation issue, yeah, there's a fee process associated with the vacation, so there is, there are fees being paid for the purpose of vacating that land. At the same time, part of our agreement with the development agreement was that we are doing excess stormwater calculations in the pond, which is where these roadways are being vacated for, so to help the overall area with its drainage. So that also plays into the picture. The, in regards to the Eunice Drive, we weren't proposing that because it's not part of the project. When we met with a lot of the citizens, a lot of the families on Bayshore did not want many roads entering Bayshore from this project. That, combined with the natural wetlands that run along Bayshore, were the primary reasons why we terminated. We are looking to vacate Cagput and DeSoto and did not worry about putting in Eunice. If the city wants us, like, we are cooperating on other projects, the water line around all the homes on Loquat, we're getting that done. Fixing the Bayshore flooding issue, we're working on that. If the city, you know, we don't have a problem having our contractors do Eunice if they're out there already. If this, the big issue, I know with the last meeting, I don't know if there's funding for it, but that's the city's problem, that's not our problem. But to have our contractors do it, that's not a big issue. They're out there, it'll save the city money, as long as we can keep on the timelines and the city can get its act together and get the money in place and time. We don't have a problem with that. In regards to the West Bayshore extension, originally, we were looking at doing Eunice Drive. We didn't even realize West Bayshore ran up there. It was brought to our attention at one of the citizens' meetings. We looked at it. It does make a much better subdivision by putting West Bayshore through. The tie-in to Bayshore Drive is much nicer. The issue we originally ran into is that this is what's called a constrained basin for a small area of that. It does all kind of flow to a general area. With doing a legal paved road without the curb and a swale in the one section to catch the runoff from Bayshore, we've done the soil borings, that's what the gentleman wrote there before. The soil there has an unbelievable, what's called a perk rate. It drains extremely fast. The engineer, our engineer, is designing a system to collect that water so it does not affect the neighbor's property and have it drain away in time. They're still working on that, and Swift Mud needs to approve the whole process. I mean, it's not just something we're going to create, and that's what it is, that this whole process has to be approved by Swift Mud, has to meet all of the state codes and be legally accepted before it goes on. It will not hold water. I mean, the soil is all sand. It drains unbelievably fast. There will not be any ponding there, and the, you know, the experts can attest to that. But I'm not an engineer, but I do believe what they tell me, and we've been assured the water will not be standing next to your property. But, I mean, we've put a lot of time into this. We've talked to a lot of people, and we really did take to heart what the citizens were saying, and we tried to put together a very nice project. We've assembled almost all the property. There are some people that did not want to sell, and that's fine. For whatever they want to do it down the road, that's okay. But we listened to what they said. We protected the wetlands. There's a saltwater wetlands here, there's a freshwater wetlands here. We're not impacting the wetlands. We're partnering with the city to increase the size of our lift station to handle if any of the residents, if they do decide to put sewer on Bayshore, it will dump into our lift station, because the capacity will already be there. We are working to improve the flooding at Bayshore and DeSoto, making some adjustments to the road, increasing the size of the pipe, adding a backflow preventer. There's numerous things we're doing just at that intersection alone to help the flooding, which has been a problem. The West Bayshore will provide an emergency exit from the site. It will also limit any traffic coming from the site on, but it does, as Ms. Protos pointed out, it will give a pedestrian and a bicycle pathway for people to move around the area and be able to go from Bayshore down West Bayshore. And if Eunice goes through, Eunice would have the same effect. We are improving sewer lines running along the lots on the backside of West Bayshore. Per the city's request, we're slip lining 800 feet of sewer pipe, putting in some new manholes. We are redoing the entire water line going around Loquat to, I guess now it's a four-inch asbestos-type pipe, and we're bringing it in with more current PVC-type of safer pipe. I mean, there's a lot of, there's a lot of good things that are coming to this. In the drainage, in the flooding, in the overall situation, there will be greatly improved when this project is done. We're bringing, you know, using current technology to improve the overall site. And our engineers are, we have a very, very good engineering firm, WURA. I know Stan Tech works closely with them, also a very good engineering firm. So this project is being done very well. We put a lot of time into it, and we're trying to develop a community everybody can be proud of. Not just us, but the people living out there, and everybody on the board, and everybody in the city. And I think we've done that. We just need to get it approved.
Thank you for remaining at the podium for questions from the board. We're made at the podium for questions from the board.
Yeah.
Ms. Protos?
I want to know, this swell that you're putting in, is it going to affect my site on my yard here, my property?
Again, what's proposed is just a little dip along the roadway for the water and just for the access issue that the gentleman's requesting. It's like any other road you drive along that is, that does not have a curb on it. You just, you put a driveway across with a little culvert. So, it will not, it will not limit access in any way, shape, or form.
When you say it's going to be a road of non-compliance, is that going to be all the way down West Bay Shore or just at that one area?
The, the road, the road with the swale is just going to be at the tip of West Bay Shore, down at that end of West Bay Shore. All of the other, all of the other stretch of West Bay Shore will have the curb. Everything that flows downhill will have the curb.
Is it the blue line? The blue line on the document or the map we have?
Can you show me here how far down?
Approximately that area, yes.
Okay. See where it goes out to the exit of West Bay Shore onto Bay Shore?
Yes.
You're not going to have any curbing or anything there?
Where the, I'm not exactly, I haven't seen the final design or where the roads meet. I can't speak to that. I haven't seen the final design.
Because I'm concerned about how that's going to hold up when they start using that road to go in and out. And it's going to be used without curbing, without sidewalks, just a plain asphalt road. It's not going to hold up.
There is plans for, there is plans for a sidewalk on the east side of West Bay Shore. There will be a sidewalk on the east side of West Bay Shore for the pedestrian and bicycle traffic. The west side will be swaled.
We'll fight about it in the yard, I guess. I'm just very disappointed that it's not going to be on both sides, but engineering-wise, if you can't do it. But on E, on page two, it says here, "The roadway improvement should include the extension of West Bay Shore Drive to connect to Bay Shore Drive, providing that all applicable permits can be obtained with the default alignment to be on Lucille Drive." I don't like that. It should say "shall be put in." That's how Mr. Healy, in my day, which was a long time ago, they used to put that in these agreements. They'd say "shall" because we know it can be done.
Ms. Protos?
And I don't trust this. I don't trust it at all.
If I can interject, when we get to the development agreement, the language you're speaking of, we do have a specific staff recommendation to delete the equivocation or the qualification.
Very good. Very good. And the other thing, the other question I had was, let me see where I can find it. "Shall be put in." Well, it was Eunice Drive and we'll take care of that with a separate... To go to the commission to see if it passes this board. I have to say, sir, there's, I don't like some of this. I came here to say I approve what you're doing, but right now, there's some things that bother me, like the R-100. You do, you're a company, you don't own the property. You're going to do this work and sell it to somebody else to develop. But you have to understand how we feel because we're going to be left holding the bag when all of you are gone. And it is our neighborhood and we are concerned. We're not trying to say no, but I know what I heard at those meetings. Let me finish, Lisa. I know what I heard at those meetings and I'm a very little bit disappointed tonight when I came here and after I read this. But maybe before you come back with your final site plan, some of these improvements can be made.
Well, and in relation to the R-100, what I would respectfully suggest is reviewing the city commission meeting we had with the development agreement because it was, it was really, it was clearly spelled out what we were asking for at that time. And there are a handful of lots that stay, were to stay under the R-100, but the rest were all to be brought into conformity with the R-100 zoning.
And see, that wasn't brought out at the beginning.
It was at the city commission meeting.
It was our meetings, it wasn't.
Any other questions, Ms. Protos?
Not at this time.
Okay. Mr. Parker, do you have any questions of the applicant on the site plan?
The non-compliant part of the road. Why is it that's non-compliant? Why can't we get curbing and all in that area there?
I'm sorry, I could barely hear you.
The non-compliant part, I'm sorry. The non-compliant part of the, of the road, the north end of West Bay Shore. Why is it the engineer said that that cannot be done there?
That, that little section, that little area is considered a constrained basin. So, it just all flows like to that curve.
Okay, I got you.
And we can't get the water to go uphill to then make it go downhill. So, but we're not talking about a large amount of water coming off the roadway. I mean, the roadway's twenty feet wide or whatever it is. So, we had to test the soils first. If the soils didn't test high enough, it would never have worked. So, we had the geotechnical engineer go out. They did testing. That, this whole area drains very, very, very well. It's all sand. So, it drains at a very, very high rate. All of the rates and readings by far exceed what was required. And that's what is being finalized and put in the SWIFT MUD permit so that, to prove that it will work.
All right. I really don't have any other questions.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Mr. Carr?
With the addition between Catch Put and DeSoto Way of the road, does that eliminate part of the retention area or does it make the lot size smaller on those two roads? What ended up happening in that situation?
The overall retention area will stay the same. We're just tweaking it in different areas. We're just figuring out where we can cut in pace to make, to meet the fire requirements. And, but it's still, the calculations have to be the calculations. We have to have enough capacity.
Okay. If it's depth or whatever it may be, you can find some other spot.
Well, we are going to trim some of the lots a little bit to make up the room and then the rest will be just in some reshaping.
Okay. An aspect of what Mr. Andropoulos was asking, it looks like his property goes to almost, just about where property one is on the plot. And the aspect of if that property was soon to be developed onto West Bay Shore and you have a basin of, or a retention pond in the aspect of that, is there, can that eventually be developed in that standpoint?
It's not a retention pond. That's, that's the big...
It's a swell, is that...
It's a swell.
Okay.
Just like this huge pond that we're showing will hold no water for any great period of time. It drains so fast, it's going to be a dry pond. So, what the swale along West Bay Shore will also be a dry swale, except for immediately after rain events. And to have any access or development needs of that site will not be hindered in any way by that. It's no different than any roadway running outside of the, outside of the inner city.
Okay. The watershed aspect, though, it seems like there's a higher height as we go down West Bay Shore south. So, if we're going to look at a shed going towards the bayou also as it's coming off the road or is it just going to be looking at going off the road and setting, setting in the ditch or swell or whatever it may be and then perking at that point? Is that what we're looking at?
Correct. We're not looking at a big, you know, first off, it's not a very big area and it's not a large volume that we're having to deal with, it's just for a very limited section.
Okay. Where West Bay Shore goes into Bay Shore, has there been discussion traffic-wise? Is that going to be a three-way stop or anything along those lines? Was that discussion with?
Whatever the, whatever the city requires. I mean, for a normal T-intersection, I imagine would be a three-way.
Okay. I just haven't heard that brought up yet, sir.
Yeah, whatever, whatever's required by the city.
Okay. That's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Mr. Stavropoulos? Any questions of the applicant?
Just, just one question. I just have one question. Had they ever considered Lucille Drive as opposed to the, the other street?
Yes. It, that was our original look, but when it was brought to our attention for the, for the West Bay Shore extension, the way West Bay Shore ties into Bay Shore, it's going to be a much nicer tie-in. And the, we do have some, you know, the rolling trains causing a little creativity on the drainage, but it will all be legal. It will all be approved by the state, you know, SWIFT MUD and it will meet all codes. But Lucille was the original plan and, you know, it just, it wasn't, you know, we didn't feel it was the best answer.
There were safety factors involved in that also.
Yeah.
And it would have taken part of the Hoffman's property.
Any other questions from the board for the applicant? Mr. Andropoulos? You have questions for the applicant?
When I saw the engineers out there, I asked them, "Are you going to put retention in this area?" They said, "Well, we're doing borings for so on." I made a call to this gentleman and he assured me there would be no retention along my property. Now I get the ditch. Also, that where it's going to connect to Bay Shore Drive is right at the entrance to my house. So, this new thing we're going to create for traffic here is now going to be right in the entrance to my house where I have enough problems with people coming down my driveway and causing all kinds of other things. So, I was willing to allow it all and not really get involved with it. But now I'm surprised, now I'm going to get a road that's substandard. When you have an edge of a road that doesn't have a curb on it, it's going to ravel and there's going to be traffic on it, so it's going to be used. No. Sure, I don't think there's going to be five million cars going down that road. But the point being is, it's very hard to edge it. It's very hard to keep it neat. You know, I don't understand why we can't curb and gutter the entire thing.
Mr. Andropoulos, this is your time to ask questions.
I did. My question is, did I, did I ask you that, would there be retention on, along that road? And what did you respond?
First off, your first question to me was, would water be running across your property? And I said, "No." The second question, would there be retention? This is not, this is not a pond. That's the whole thing here. We're talking a swale that will drain away after the rain is done. Will there be standing water here? No, there's not going to be standing water here. I stand by that now and I stood by it then.
Did you tell me you were going to put a swale along the length of my property, about three hundred and fifty feet?
No, I did not.
Did you say you weren't going to put any kind of retention along my property?
Again, this is, this is a drainage. This is not holding water.
Well, now you're, now...
No. You're saying retention, you're saying pond and retention. That's not what this is. It's going to drain away. We did, we did the test. The person, the person you talked to...
Why do you need the swale, sir?
For the water on this roadway to drain away without running on your property.
So, you're creating a drainage event along my property. Is that correct?
Yes. Just like in...
Something that wasn't there before.
Correct. The road wasn't there before either.
Is this going to create any demonstrative diminution of value of my property?
No.
That's your opinion, is that correct?
Well, you asked my opinion.
Yeah, I did. That's fine. Why can't you put curbs and gutters along this property when you're putting curbs and gutters along the rest of it?
Because the entire site flows this way, except for a little section right here. We cannot get this to flow uphill to get over it. There's about a two-foot difference in elevation from here to here. We're not talking a great area. We're looking at about a two-foot elevation. We cannot put the curb and gutter in and get it to flow above that, to go uphill.
Is that because it's expensive to make it flow in the correct direction?
No. It's got nothing to do with cost.
Really? So, you could put a pump there and actually pump it to your retention pond, is that correct? Would you curb and gutter it?
I don't know if that's acceptable.
They don't pump any stormwater anywhere in the state of Florida?
I am not an expert on that. I'd have to... Mr. Anderson would be the one to address that.
They would need to demonstrate, they would have to, one, be allowable by SWIFT MUD. They would, SWIFT MUD would review it. And then it would also have to be allowed by the city since the city's going to be ultimately owning and maintaining all stormwater management facilities in this facility.
But it is, it is a solution. A possible solution.
Yes. Physically, it is a possible solution. With the curb, you're concerned that there's no curb, correct? Is that a part of your concern?
No, no curb, no stuff.
One of the, one of the things the applicant could look at is adding the curb, but providing curb cuts, essential flumes on the side of the curb to allow the water to go into the swale. So, that's something they certainly could look at, to provide the curb and not have just your asphalt shoulder.
Very good.
Thank you. I don't have any other questions of the applicant. Thank you, Mr. Andropoulos.
May I make a clarification on Lucille Drive also for Mr. Stavropoulos to know? Lucille Drive, when you couple Lucille Drive where the road is, it's not all city right-of-way. You go south, you'll see the poles and the wires. It will be right next to a residential section as close as from here to this gentleman. And there's a house in the back that's going to take all the front driveway. They'll have the road right underneath our house because it's a stilt house. And that was another reason why Lucille Drive was not considered. Also, like I said, for the hill, the danger of the cars, Mr. Stavropoulos, so you'll know. And it would have to take half of Irene Hoffman's front yard to have a turnaround, to get in and out.
Are there any other questions for the applicant, the board or from Mr. Andropoulos? Thanks, sir.
Mr. Chairman, if I can, before we move on, I just want to be clear on the record. There've been a couple of terms used, "non-compliant" and "substandard." The development agreement will require the street to meet the city standards. There are different standards for different sections, urban and rural. In some cases, a swale is allowed. But I want to be clear that the road itself will need to be designed and constructed consistent with city standards.
Thank you, Mr. Healy.
Okay. I think if I'm correct, that we will go now to public comments at this point in time?
Well, you still have, we just finished, that was applicant. We just cross-examined the applicant on a site plan. So, you want to give the interview a chance to be able to the evidence he wishes to present?
Fourteen seventeen.
Mr. Andropoulos, do you want to make any presentation on the site plan?
Site plan?
What's your, okay.
My presentation is as follows. You've heard it and I won't beat the dead horse here, but I ask that you put a road that has curbs and gutters. This city engineer or city consultant has said that this is a possibility can be done. There's also what's called "flat curbs" that can be done to be compliant. I also ask that there is no retention or drainage. And if there is, if that is required or that road is creating those kinds of problems, that they do some kind of work to put it in the collection system that they're putting for their whole development or don't put the road in. Period. I don't care either way. That's all I have for that.
Thank you, sir.
Well, I guess I forgot about the development agreement. I guess we'll do that before the public comments. I appreciate the patience of you all, but I just don't want you to have to come up three different times. And so, that's why we're doing this first. We're going to go through the last of the, of the applications and then, then it'll be time for the public comments. So, please bear with us. All right. Mr. Healy, if you want to go ahead and give us a staff report on the development agreement. That's application fourteen dash seventeen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As the report points out, this is a development agreement pursuant to Florida local government. It's spelled with a, whoops.
Thank you.
Apologize. Being done pursuant to the Florida Local Government Agreement Act and the city's requirement, section ninety-six through ninety-nine of the code. Very simply, the purpose of the development agreement is to identify all of these particulars, some of which we've talked about, to make sure there's a clear understanding and responsibility on both the applicant's side and the city's side about exactly what will be done. Pursuant to city code and authorization from the city commission, the city manager has negotiated the terms of the attached development agreement. And I believe in your backup, you have a... you have a memorandum from Mr. LaChorus recommending approval of the development agreement. I'm going to just touch on what I've called the key terms of the agreement. They're obviously set forth in what you might say is excruciating detail. The city attorney and the applicant's legal counsel have spent a lot of time working out the specifics here, and they are laid out in great detail in the agreement itself. The keys, I think, are as follows. It will be constructed in compliance with the site plan, which is attached and becomes an exhibit to the development agreement. Agreement is for a period of five years or upon receiving the final certificate of occupancy for the final home, whichever comes first. It details the minimum size of the homes and all of the requirements in the R-100 zoning district to be met. The developer will be responsible for the construction of all required infrastructure, to the extent the facilities are upsized, and I believe the applicant mentioned the sewer lift station in particular and the drainage outlet to Kramer Bayou. The developer will be eligible for reimbursement from the city to the extent those are oversized to meet future city requirements. And we identify some of the examples for that. The roadway improvements are identified. We've talked about those in some detail, I won't go into that again. We do want to strike, and we'll address it in specific reference to Ms. Protos' comment earlier, there is not a default option or alignment for Lucille Drive. We do not want the Lucille Drive connection made.
So it should be, shall be put in? Can that be changed to that?
The important part would be this, is it 16E1, the language in the development agreement itself? And that is among our recommendations.
That it shall be put in?
Yes. Again, the staff recommendation is to approve the development agreement, subject to the specific provisions outlined in the resolution attached 2014-30, which details those. And they are that they, all of those requirements in the development agreement be complied with. It references the D's restrictive covenants, easements, and other conveyances performed and obligated under the development agreement, subject to the approval of the city attorney recorded in the public record. You have the attached recommendation from the city manager, and the specific change that I wanted to reference is on page nine of the development agreement, number 16E1. It says the project shall utilize the West Bay Shore Drive right-of-way for the northern extension connection to Bay Shore Drive. The rest of that paragraph is to be deleted, or we recommend that it be deleted, rather.
You said page 16.
What about the second sentence? Is that to be deleted as well, requiring approval of permitting agencies?
Yes.
Which page is this on, sir?
It's on page nine of the attached development agreement. We didn't want to appear to equivocate, Mr. Chairman, or leave that option open. They've done some exploratory work on that and have every reason to believe it will be permitted.
Thank you.
Okay, would you just repeat that for me, please?
Yes. On page nine, under paragraph 16E1...
Okay.
The first sentence will remain as it's written, that the project shall utilize the West Bay Shore Drive right-of-way for the northern extension connection to Bay Shore Drive. The remaining part of that paragraph would be deleted.
No.
Okay, and that score?
Mr. Healy?
Karen has corrected me. I stand corrected.
Okay.
In answer to Mr. Vincent's first question, the first sentence, the second sentence, right, the northern extension is subject to approval. Obviously, it has to be approved or it can't be built. It's the last sentence that would be deleted.
That's going to be eliminated.
Yes.
Well, actually, that'd be the last two sentences, then. That's what I thought the...
I sure messed that up, yes.
The part that says, in the event that the roadway alignment connection to Bay Shore Drive shall be Lucille Drive, that will be eliminated.
Yes.
Yes, and the sentence before that, correct.
So the first two sentences remain, the last two sentences are deleted. I apologize.
See, I feel the, I feel that it can be accomplished, and I think it should say "shall."
It does say "shall."
Not if you take out that one sentence, it doesn't.
Says, "The project shall utilize the West Bay Shore Drive right-of-way for the northern extension connection to Bay Shore Drive."
Yes, I've got that. But then the other one, if the northern extension is subject to approval permitting, with permitting agencies, if any of those agencies are unable for any reason to approve the northern extension, the developer shall not. See, I don't like that.
That language has already been deleted.
I know. I see, but the sentence under that was deleted.
Mr. Healy, go ahead, proceed.
Okay, thank you. One last thing I would just point out, then, that obviously on the next page, on page 10, some of the other permits that we've all referenced in the course of the discussion are conditions of the approval of the development agreement. All of the building permits, SWIFTMUD permits, DEP permits, and so forth. So approval of the development agreement hinges on all of the other requisite permits. With that, I'll try and answer any questions the board has in mind.
Thank you, Mr. Healy. Any questions from the board, from Mr. Healy or staff regarding the development agreement? Ms. Protos?
No.
Mr. Parker? Mr. Carr?
I just have a question real quick, and just below what we were just talking about, under E1, when you go to 2, it says, talks about a estimated amount of $50,000 for potential repairs to any damage of roads and so on. Is that just like held in escrow? I mean, what, what is that? Can you explain that for a second?
I'll let the city attorney address it.
Page on, Mr. Carr?
Page nine, E, and then the second paragraph. Developer shall be responsible for repairing roadways damaged as a result of trucks or heavy equipment on those roadways or haul routes.
It's pretty much as it reads, I mean, you know...
Okay, so it's just if something happens, they're going to...
Right, so we'll have a letter of credit saying that, you know, without being too, too basic, these guys are good for the money if they damage roadway, so we'll be aware that the city's going to be reimbursed, and if that happens, we'll, we'll work with the developer to, to recover those sums.
And then it talks about the sidewalks on page six, under number 16, public infrastructure. Letter A, and then the first paragraph, sidewalks shall be provided on both sides of Eunice Drive. I'm just assuming that's the couple pieces of property that are currently there. Is that correct? Am I correct in that?
It's actually for Eunice Drive running from Loquat down to Sunset.
Okay. From Loquat to Sunset? Thanks.
Mr. Andropoulos?
No questions at this time.
Mr. Andropoulos, do you have any questions regarding this? Oh, wait, I'm sorry. Do I need to go to the applicant? No, I'm sorry. I'm out of order.
Unless you have cross-examination for city staff from anybody.
Oh, okay. Do you have any questions of city staff on this matter?
My question is, where in the development agreement does it say that they will put the Bay Shore Drive extension in that will have curbs and gutters and be, does it have anything to that respect? Sidewalks, anything, does it say anything about it?
It does, on, excuse me, on page nine of the development agreement, this is sub-16, or Section 16, sub-E. It says, "All proposed roads shall be constructed to meet the minimum standards of Section 131C." 131C, and I think, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but that requires curb and gutter, except on city engineer approval, so it's, it's, it's the preferred standard, but it is, it is a flexible standard as well.
It's flexible to where the city can approve a non, a non-curb?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, with the swale.
I see. Okay. Is there any way to adjust that agreement to not have that latitude?
Yeah, I mean legally, if I'm directed by either this board or the, or staff or the Board of Commissioners to amend it, I'll certainly amend it with the, if that's what, if that's what my directions are for the final agreement.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, would the applicant like to comment on the, the development agreement?
No, just, just one last comment. You know, there's, we've worked with the city closely, we've put a lot of time in this, the city staff has put a lot of time in this. Is any agreement perfect? Probably not. Have we tried to address everybody's issues to the best ability to, to make this project work and be successful? Yes, we have. And, you know, just hope everybody has respect for the, the time and effort that the city staff has put in, the city experts have put in, along with our own experts, because this has not been an easy project to get to this point, so I'd like to thank you for, for your time tonight.
Thank you, sir. You want to remain there in case there's any questions from the board?
Be delighted.
Any, any questions from the board of the applicant regarding the development agreement? Ms. Protos?
No, I'm satisfied with what they said about West Bay Shore Drive and the sidewalks and the, that Mr. Andropoulos spoke about, as it comes out on regular Bay Shore, I'll call it now, because it's not there yet. And I thank you for putting in West Bay Shore. My only, well, when we get ready to take the vote, I'll make a statement.
Thank you. Mr. Parker, do you have any questions?
Not, not at this time.
Mr. Carr?
None.
Mr. Andropoulos?
No questions.
Thank you, sir. You may be seated.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Andropoulos, do you have any questions? He indicated none. All right, Mr. Andropoulos, do you want to make any comments regarding the development agreement as the intervenor? Okay, thank you, sir. Now I believe we're ready to have public comment. I appreciate the public's patience. We do want to hear what you have to say, those of you that have come to, to give your opinions and whatever you want to say. Let me first ask those who may want to speak on this item, come to the podium. If you're speaking in favor of it, of course, there may be some that are, you know, in favor of some and not in favor of other parts of it, that's quite all right, but, so if, when you do come to the podium, please start off with giving us your name and your address, and you will have four minutes to, you know, state what you wish to state to the board. See, none, anyone want to speak opposing? Please come. Yes, sir, if you will come to the podium.
Lee Nicholas, 757 Bay Shore. Are you people really talking about putting Eunice through? Okay. I live next to Eunice. Eunice is low. Eunice is lower than Bay Shore. You'd have to fill, not that you can, but you'd have to fill that four and a half to five feet to get it even with Bay Shore. It's spongy and it's marshy back there.
There is, in this site plan, there's no plan to put Eunice through, if that answers your question.
Right. They were talking about it, and that, like...
Well, there's been some opinions stated that they would like to see it, but the site plan application does not provide for putting Eunice, any development along Eunice Drive other than the sidewalks.
And you're not going to put Lucille through? That's been watched too, right?
As I understand it, that's correct, sir.
Okay. Then I'm, I'm good then.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else would like to speak, either for or against the applications? This is against any of the three applications, the rezoning, the development agreement, or the site plan? Yes, sir?
Hi, good evening. Paul Lewis, 820 Bay Shore Drive. Certainly want to thank the, the city, as well as Mr. Anderson. He's worked a lot with me, he's answered a lot of questions I've had. The developers also answered a lot of questions I've had and concerned. 820 Bay Shore Drive is the house that's at the bottom of the hill, tends to flood in the storms. My property is also the property that would have the outflow pipe, the proposed outflow pipe on it, which go into Kramer Bayou. I believe I have to grant an easement to allow that to happen. I also own a lot across the street from 820 Bay Shore Drive, which is currently along the wetlands, I think that's the saltwater wetlands, and then next to that is a proposed, it looks like a lift station is proposed there. So certainly, I have a vacant property which would be impacted by this development, as well as my main residence would be impacted by it, and have a lot of concern regarding the storm impact. So certainly trusting the expertise of the, of the developer, as well as the expertise of the city consultant on this. Want to make sure I understand, the dry pond would drain into the freshwater wetlands, which would drain into the saltwater wetlands, and then ultimately drain under the street and into Kramer Bayou. At least, that's my, my current understanding of the, of the process. One of the questions was, was answered before regarding high tide. I thought that was a very good question that was asked, because one of my thoughts, and again, I'm not a stormwater expert, not my field of expertise, was, well, if it's a high tide, isn't that water just going to kind of sit there in the wetlands and flow over? Because I know there's going to be a lot of increased drainage as a result of this development. There was a lot of rain recently, and I actually went back there, and I was pretty impressed by the amount of water that kind of sat along that wetlands, and then also went underneath the street and into the bayou. So, again, a lot of trust being put into this, that this isn't going to worsen the situation. It's also, frankly, hopefully this will not cause flooding on my vacant property across the street by expansion of the current wetlands if it can't drain anymore, as additional drainage comes off this development and sits in the, the wetlands there, and if it doesn't go anywhere, ultimately it's going to flood my property, which is across the street, and make that worthless. So I haven't got any outside consultants on this. I appreciate Mr. Anderson working with me and answering a lot of questions I've had. I'm certainly, some blind faith that, that what I'm being told is correct and will not worsen the flooding along my house, worsen the flooding along the vacant property that I own across the street, and ultimately not cause additional problems along this, along the street. I still, again, my basic understanding of engineering, I'm assuming that any water that's going to collect at that open between DeSoto Way and Bay Shore is going to somehow drain downhill, so I guess that's going to be the way it's sloped and not drain straight into Bay Shore. And again, assuming that's going to be some engineering feats to have that done. Don't pretend I understand it, maybe other folks in the room do more than I do, but just want to express my concerns to the commission, and hopefully these things are being looked at and accounted for as this project is going forward, so, thank you.
Thank you, sir. We often rely on experts, because none of us up here that I know of are engineers, and so, and certainly, experts can disagree, and sometimes we do have competing experts on various applications, but we too hope that there will be an improvement for your property, as well as the neighborhood there with the flooding. Any other comments by the public? Yes, sir?
My name's Jace Cole, 734, 748 Loquat. I just wanted to thank the commission, obviously, for letting me speak. I want to thank the builder or the gentleman here, and everybody that was involved, as far as the city. I know everybody's worked hard, and the many... I know everybody's worked hard in the many meetings that we've had. I'm not really sure of the impact of what will happen to Loquat. I would like to know more information about that. But all that being said, my feeling is, is that I like what's there now. I see no reason to build on it. I see no reason to do anything to it. I like the turtles, I like the hawks, I like the trees that are there, and I like the property the way it is. I don't understand why we have to feel that we always have to infill every place that we can, to pack more people into an area that just doesn't seem to have enough areas it is for what's going through there now. I would ask the commission, and I'm so sorry, I would ask the commission to say no to this project, and to leave this place the way it is, and not to mess with it any longer. Thanks so much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else from the public wish to make a comment? Please come forward.
Lucie Anne Robinson, 948 Bay Shore. I would like to thank the city and Mr. Danielson for a very open process. We've been allowed to participate, and that's been great. I would like, though, to address specifically the zoning issue. The 1958 plat seems to have created all kinds of opportunities and unease. Last year, with a different developer, we were told that the plat required a change to R-70. This year, we're told that the plat really complicates matters and calls for R-100A. That's confusing, and we don't really feel comfortable with that, at least I don't. We were told during the community meetings that the lots, the bigger lots, at the north end of the property would remain R-100. I think I heard tonight that the city staff has asked that those be rezoned as well. I don't understand that. I hope I've misunderstood, but why not leave those conforming R-100 properties? They relate to the bigger properties at that end of the neighborhood, as the smaller R-100A properties relate to the existing lots on West Bay Shore and Loquat. I would ask you to consider that.
Thank you. Anyone else wishes to speak? Seeing none, the public portion of the meeting will be declared closed. It's time for closing argument. If anyone wants to make a closing statement from the city? Mr. Haley, do you want to make any closing statements?
Nothing further, unless there are questions.
Would the applicant want to make any closing statement?
No, thank you. I think we've covered everything.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Andropoulos, would you like to make a closing statement?
No.
Thank you, sir. At this time, then, we will go to the deliberations of the board. And we will consider these one by one, as far as when motions are made. As I understand it, they're all contingent on each other, but we're going to take them one by one, starting with the zoning amendment, application 14-51. That's the application to rezone R-100, single-family residential, to R-100A, single-family residential.
I'll move the motion to approve this application for rezoning. An aspect of, city staff answered the questions of, if it was rezoned to 100A, that would have a max of five buildings, or five dwellings per acre. This builder is going to be building three dwellings per acre, which is below what the maximum is, which is also below what the R-100 is also. I know... And then also, along with, there's some type of contingency for the zoning also, from city staff's recommendation for the other two applications, I believe also. Is that correct? Along those lines, too. To answer, it sounds like what other individuals may have brought up with the three or four properties that are larger, it sounds like there's some type of... We're looking at it as a whole, instead of each property individually for rezoning. So I think that's why the four properties in question that are larger are being pulled in as a whole project development, instead of three properties for one, and then the others. Is that correct?
I'm going to cut you off there. Are you making a motion to recommend approval?
Yes.
Okay. My suggestion is, let's have the motion, and see if there's a second, and then open discussion, based on some of the things that you're talking about. You've got a motion on the floor to recommend approval of this application to the Board of Commissioners?
Is there a second to the motion?
I second it.
There's a motion and second to approve of the application for rezoning, application 14-51. Any comments from the board before we take a vote? Ms. Protas?
I'm going to stand on the R-100, that I understood it was going to be, with the majority of the lots, and then the smaller ones, they would be rezoned at a later time or stay at the zoning that they had. I've been to all the meetings. Like I said, I'm not the brightest bulb in the chandelier, but I did hear R-100. I know what was said and what was discussed. R-100 is what's important to the integrity of the area and the neighborhood. The 1958 zoning was gone a long time ago, through the years when we used to have the zoning hearings within the city. And I'm not buying this. So, I like what I see in the rest of your proposal. I'm glad for West Bay Shore. I'm glad, happy to hear that you said you would do the sidewalk, the... That Mr. Andropoulos spoke about. But I will not support the R-100A. I think it's a downgrade for us. Our area is better than that. And like I said, you're here today, you'll be gone tomorrow, and we'll have to live with it.
Any other comments from the board? Discussions on the motion?
I think overall, though, we're looking at, is it the three properties, 33, 34, 35, that would fall into play that Ms. Protas is talking about? Am I wrong, looking to the city, we're looking at the whole project as a whole, and not each individual property of rezoning? I mean, that's what it comes down to, right?
Yes, we wanted to look at the entirety of the property, have it similarly classified. We understand those three or four lots, or five, are larger and aren't going to be changed. If they were going to be changed or altered in some way as a function of the layout, then we might feel differently. But it will allow them to continue the same size as they are now, irrespective of the R-100A.
Thanks.
Any other discussion from the board? We'll take a vote. Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Protas?
No.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Mr. Stavropoulos?
Yes.
Chairman Vincent?
Yes.
The next application is for site plan approval. Application 14-62 for Bay Shore Heights.
Make a motion to... How would I go about if I wanted to... Right, recommend approval with a couple of other recommendations? Okay. Yeah, I want to, a couple of recommendations on top of what the staff has put into the backup for the site plan approval. I think the city attorney looked into the vacated property a little bit more. He talked about that, so... One, that the trees be addressed, which the... Which was addressed by the city staff. Number two, that Eunice be looked at by the commission if it's feasible, based on surveys and other aspects, and to traffic safety and other approvals that need to be done for connectivity through the whole neighborhood as a whole, and then how city staff has it designed also.
Can I make a lead recommendation to you?
Of course.
I'm going to, anyway. Understanding that the board may wish to pass on some recommendation to the board relative to Eunice, that particular issue is, again, not part of the site plan approval that's being asked to, and so it's not probative of the criteria applicable to site plan approval. My recommendation is, if you wish to make a recommendation to the board relative to Eunice, I think legally it's better framed and characterized as perhaps part of the development agreement, or a separate motion after the meeting to have a look at that issue. My preference is, because it wasn't, it's not negotiated as part of the development agreement that's been negotiated with the city manager, is to make it a separate motion after you've worked through the three items. And the reason for that is, it's just simply not part of the site plan criteria that need to be met here.
That's fair.
So, the motion stand as amended, then? With that in mind?
Yeah.
Well, can we have a restatement of what the motion is, then?
Motion to approve what city staff has presented. I'm not sure how to phrase this. I mean, yeah, it's how city staff's, because the trees that I mentioned are already brought up with other approvals through the application, so as presented for application 14 point, or dash 62.
Thank you, Mr. Carr. Is there a second to the motion?
I second it.
Okay, we have a motion and second to approve of application 14-62, site plan approval for Bay Shore Heights. Discussion among the board?
Just so everyone understands that the site plan approval is different from what we just voted on. What it is, I mean, what they presented to us. It's not approving, this isn't approving the rezoning. Am I right or wrong?
It's just on the site plan.
That's what I want.
But we've already voted on the, I mean, they all three go together.
Well, that's what I want to be understood into the audience.
Okay. Any other comments or discussion on the motion?
Is it clear, Mr. Chairman, just for sake of the record, that the site plan we're considering includes the Loop Street between Kajaput and De Soto, that was presented and discussed tonight, as opposed to what was in the file previously?
I think it's clear to the board. I don't know if the record adequately reflects that.
I think it does now.
But it's the revised site plan that we were given at the beginning of the meeting that shows the connection of De Soto Way and Kajaput Way, rather than a dead end on those streets. We'll take a vote?
Mrs. Protas?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Mr. Stavropoulos?
Yes.
Chairman Vincent?
Yes.
All right, now, we'll take the third item, which is the development agreement application.
So moved for the approval of 1417, application 1417 Development Agreement on Bay Shore Heights.
Thank you, Ms. Protas. There's been a motion to approve. Is there a second?
May I amend that with the concessions made to Mr. Andropoulos on the issues that he had with the swell and the road?
Yes, it's your motion. You can make it however you want.
I'd like to add that to it, because it was discussed here.
Okay, with the recommendation that it be amended, or to provide for curbs and... Or whatever it is on the, on West Bay Shore Drive?
Yes.
Is there anything else other than the curbs along the road that you...
I think they're going to look at the swell and the drainage of the property, and give him an answer to his questions and concerns. I would, I don't know how to word that.
I mean, relative to the motion, you really want to be focused on the language of the development agreement and anything. If I understand your motion correctly, you'd like to recommend approval, conditioned upon requiring curb and gutter throughout the length of West Bay Shore.
Okay.
I don't know that there were additional conditions to be...
We'd have to listen to so lengthy and find out.
That sounds good, yes. Oh, I understand it.
All right.
Can we clarify that one more time? I'm sorry. So, the motion is to approve the development agreement with curb and gutter throughout West Bay Shore, to Bay Shore?
With a recommendation of the city to...
And the drainage issue, the swell.
Well, I think, as I understand it, the curb and gutter issue is intended, it goes to drainage, and intended to, intended to provide for drainage in particular ways. So I think that covers it, but I don't want to put words in your mouth.
You did, that's all right.
I do want to put words in your mouth.
So it's a motion to approve with a recommendation that curbs and swells issued and drainage along West Bay Shore Drive be addressed by the commission.
That's fine.
I'll second that.
Okay, is the motion second? Any discussion among the board? Take a vote, Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Protas?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Mr. Stavropoulos?
Yes.
Chairman Vincent?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, if you will allow me, I'd like to make a motion to send to the City Commission to please consider opening Eunice Drive with the purpose of the multimodal transportation element of the comprehensive plan for the safety of the residents between Sunset and Bay Shore, where it goes down the hill. I don't know what we would call that, the downhill Bay Shore area, and to open up the street to enhance the city, to get those lots on the tax record, to be able to develop if property owners want a development in that area, and to give them an extra access for a safety factor, if nothing else, for the residents of that area.
Okay, you'd like to move to recommend that the city put through Eunice Drive?
Yes, work with the developer, with, he said at this time, it would be, and I hope you said they send this in the minutes to them, so they'll know, that while the developers are out there with the roads, would be the appropriate time to do it.
Sure, staging costs would be the same and already absorbed. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second for recommendation to look into it.
Okay, any discussion on the motion?
Is this to do a study on putting this through?
It's to do a recommendation at the board.
That they put it through.
We're an advisory board. We can't tell them what to do, but we can make recommendations.
Advise, we can recommend it.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
Okay. Mrs. Protas?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Mr. Stavropoulos?
Yes.
Chairman Vincent?
Yes.
Chairman Vincent, I'd like to say something to the developers, if I may at this time.
If it's short?
I would like to thank Bruce and the developers for working with us on West Bay Shore. I think it's, as I said before, it's the safest way to go, and I feel very confident that you'll be able to put it in. And I want to thank you for all the, looking at all the concerns that we've had with that development. We do not own that property, and that people who own it have a right to develop it. And there's a lot of properties around Tarpon Springs that we wish they wouldn't develop, but unless you own it, you can't do anything about it. But we do try to work to get the best that we can. Mr. Haley, thank you for working with us on this. And Mrs. Lemons, I know it was very trying on you, lots of headaches, and I thank you because what you came to work with us in Tarpon was not this. And I know it's been very hard, so I want to thank you very much for standing with the city and working with us on this project. I think I've been the... I think I've been the biggest pain of anybody on this project. And I may not be around in five years to see it at my age. I don't know if I'm going to make it or not. But I hope you start it in the coldest time of the year, so the rattlesnakes don't come out, because we do have a lot out there, but I do have confidence that it's going to be very nice. And I know you're not going to do it. You're going to flip it and sell it to a developer to come in and do it. But at that time, we will have to approve the site plans, and we'll have other opportunities to come back to this development.
Okay, now we're up to staff comments. Any comments, Ms. Lemmons, Mr. Healy?
I have no comments. I just appreciate everybody's consideration tonight, and the participants here and the residents who came out to speak on behalf of it. And the city is looking forward to a good development that will help all of us and help grow the city. So I just thank everyone.
Mr. Healy, any comments?
It's not like the old days, is it, Mr. Haley?
Okay, now comments from the board members. Ms. Protas, do you want to add to your comment?
No. I just know that it will be coming back with the site plan approval and all that.
Mr. Parker?
No, thank you.
Mr. Carr? Mr. Stavropoulos? Okay, we're ready for adjournment. Motion adjourned?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.